The time is now five o'clock and I'm called to order the special meeting work session of the Indian Prairie School Board, Monday, January 8th, 2018. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Raisin?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
And for the audience's information, Mr. Carubus does have the flu today and we thought it'd be better that he not join us.[46.12][46.12](laughing) And Ms. Donahue actually planned a vacation about a year and a half ago to Antarctica.
She's not calling in from the other side.
And there is no cell service from Antarctica.[61.14][61.14](laughing) So with that, we turn to our elementary attendance area adjustments workshop presentation. As people know, I asked to delay the vote till later tonight, would give us an opportunity to hear further from the community and for each of us, and I know each of us have come to the central office, asked many, many questions, and as a result, we asked the administration to provide us with one final presentation and answer any questions that we may have in order that we may take an appropriate vote. So with that, I turn that over.
Thank you for this opportunity to just take a step back tonight and show you some of the thinking that went into our current proposal for the attendance area adjustments. Our purpose has been to give you some background and to look at the options that were considered to alleviate the overcrowding at Brooks, Brookdale, and Peterson. As you know, the demographic study that we had completed by the RSP showed that an overall enrollment decrease of 500 students over the next five years at elementary. However, there were some building level challenges at the elementary level that were identified as we have certainly experienced this year. So I wanted to take a look at and show you, the principals and I have had many conversations over the summer and this fall and this winter to talk about the, how to best utilize the space in these three buildings. So this chart sort of shows you what would be occurring should we not make any attendance area adjustments. So if you look at Brooks, they currently have music in room 107, which is, if you know our buildings, is one of our small conference room classrooms. But were we not to make any changes, we would need to have art on a cart, music could be in room 107 or on the stage. Currently, our ELL and bilingual teachers continue to share a small classroom office. So often, we have up to 15 kids, one group doing native language and the other group learning ELL skills in the same classroom, and that would need to continue. They also have at Brooks identified spaces where teachers can take small groups and teachers can sign up for that, so that would need to continue. And you can see then, the following year after that, were there to be more increases, increases as RSP has projected. We would also have art and music on a cart. We would need to use room 107 and the old computer labs as classrooms there and then continue to do the sharing of small classrooms, the sharing of offices, and identifying conference room areas and spaces. When you look at Brookdale, they currently do music on the stage, but were we not to make any changes, we would probably need to have art on a cart. We could continue with music on the stage, but we would need to use room 107 as a classroom and use the old computer lab as a special education area and relocate PA, our Project Arrow students into the divided off area into the LMC. We were a little bit close to doing that this fall, if we'd had a few more students in particular grade levels. There are also, we would need to identify spaces that we would use as conference rooms or the LMC for small groups and continue to share some of the offices. Brookdale is one of our older buildings and so it doesn't have as many office spaces as some of our other schools do. In the year following that, we would need to continue with those same adaptations and perhaps move reading improvement into the LMC, which is currently divided up into some offices off of the library. And then at Peterson, we were, we were able this year, we have to use just classrooms. Neither, we still have an art and a music room at Peterson this year, but should we not make any changes, given the enrollment from the new construction areas, we would probably need to have art and music on a cart. There are four half classrooms at Peterson that we could take down a wall and create two regular classrooms and then move those folks into some shared offices, and that's what would happen at Peterson. So we wanted to go through some of the options that we explored prior to looking at the attendance area adjustments that we wanted to.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Should we ask questions at the end, or would you like us to do it during the course of the presentation?
No, you can ask questions as we go.
Okay, I have one question then.
Sure.
Room 107, if I recall, is rather small in most schools?
Yes.
Do you know the approximate size, or when you talk about using that as a classroom, are you talking about maybe for one of the smaller sections, like?
Yeah.
Even Project Arrow, ELL?
Well, typically, we, either it's used as a conference room or it's used for some of those other sections, like Project Arrow or ELL. We have before used it as a classroom, but you need to be really very aware of how many students you put in there because of, because of the space. It's not the same as, it's not the same size as our other classrooms.
That's what I remember. What, and do you know the approximate size of that typical room?
It's a little larger than half the size of a standard classroom.
Okay, thanks.
So one of the things we considered was relocating kindergarteners to other schools. For those of you that have been around in our district for a while, you know that we have done that before on a couple of occasions when we were at our boom of enrollment. If you look here, Brookdale would be projected to have five sections of kindergarten. Brooks would be projected to have five sections of kindergarten and Peterson would be projected to have four sections of kindergarten next year and probably five the years after. The only area, the only schools that have enough capacity for those kindergarteners would be our southern schools, and I've listed those there, so we would relocate them to one of those schools. The transportation costs, we did calculate, those would be, it would be about $358,000 to transport kindergarteners. It would also increase a bus ride from about 20 minutes, for kindergarteners that are on a bus now, it's about 20 minutes, to go to one of the southern schools would increase their ride to about 45 minutes on an average.
And that's one way, right?
Yes, that's one way. In addition, it would, it would move and impact many more students and families than are in our current proposal. That's over 300 of our, of our kindergarteners that would be impacted, which then would impact those families. Some families would have students in both grade, in two schools, maybe a kindergartner at one school and kids in another grade level at another school. So that really limits our ability to do that community building that we like to do in schools and that sense of belonging for kindergarteners as they come into schools. As I said, we've done it before, but this didn't seem like a viable option, given that we have some other space and other options. We did, we also considered briefly relocating fifth grade to the middle schools, but quickly realized that the middle schools don't have the capacity to take on what we would need for our fifth graders.
Another option that was discussed and brought up by the community members was the opportunity to bring modular classrooms to our schools that were overcrowded. We've had modular classrooms in our buildings or in our district in the past. The regional office of education requires a five-year plan to move those off, so it's not a permanent solution. Brookdale in particular would require four modular classrooms. The difficulty with that is that the site plan is difficult. We'd have two opportunities, Site A and a Site B for modular classrooms at Brookdale. They're both at the back of the property. They would take playground and field space away from the school. The difficulty also would be, we'd have to consider the new security risks associated with modular classrooms. In the past, several years ago, when we had those in our facilities, on our sites, the security measures that we've put in place aren't the same as they are now. So we would really have to amp up some cameras, door systems, potentially a security monitor to help walk kids back and forth, particularly if they're going to their specials, or we got units that didn't have restrooms associated with them.
Jay, I just received something again from one Brookdale earlier this afternoon, which talked about not having kids in there, having like, I think it was the staff lounge and other things. Any thoughts on that?
Well, you could certainly consider moving some staff into those spaces, but the, aside from the lounge, there's not any staff space that's large enough to house kids and really convert to a classroom. So, you know, you have a very limited ability to really maximize the space of those, of those modular units if you're moving them into office areas, because our office areas are typically eight by 10, not a, you know, 34 by 34 classroom. So you could do something creative like that, but you really wouldn't get the bang for your buck with modular classrooms. The other thing to consider with the modular classrooms is that the, the community that's directly around the school would have the impact of seeing those on a daily basis. We'd certainly landscape them, but we wouldn't put mature landscaping up. We'd put, you know, smaller material up, and in Brookdale's particular case, Site A would be within 100 feet of the backyards and Site B would be within 50 feet of the backyards and something that we would really have to consider. And I know when we had them at Young, there was some community members who, you know, were glad to see them leave and were contacting us regularly about when are the modulars going to be gone from the school? For eight years![759.01][759.01](laughing)
Is there an alternative to a modular classroom? Is there some other architectural design?
To a modular classroom?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm, again, trying to figure out the staff, and I understand now that it may not accommodate the numbers that we need to, but I'm just wondering, is there a different building besides this modular classroom design?
You know, the only thing that I could reference is a construction trailer that has smaller office-type spaces to it, which is fairly unsightly. There, you know, there's something we've had on our schools when we were either adding additions or constructing a new school. There, there are more flexible space that, you know, can be used as a conference room or an office.
Okay, thank you.
Brooks Elementary School, that would receive two options with two classrooms each. So option A would be the, you know, the preferred site if we put one. Option B would be the other one. Again, security, having the kids flowing back and forth into the school, deciding which grade level of students you're going to put out there. It would impact the pickup and drop-off for folks at the back, and again, there's a safety and security aspect of the modular classrooms, so not a great recommendation. And I'd, I'd want to just also emphasize as we're doing this, we will be adding temporary classrooms and later in the presentation, you're going to see that we have a number of empty classrooms throughout the district. So it's not financially, you know, the greatest, in addition to programming, the greatest option. It certainly keeps the school unit together and allows you not to move students, but from a financial perspective and from a current classroom perspective, we've got the space within the district. Peterson was the other one where we would need two modular classrooms.
Jay, I had a quick question, just on, on the, on Brooks. A, where A is located, is that, is that the back, is that the side, or is that the backside of the building, or is that the front?
That's, that's actually the back corner of the building.
Okay, okay.
B is the front side of the building.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Peterson, again, would require two modular classrooms, option A and option B. Again, reduces the playground space and we would have to pay for some additional security measures so that those students, when they're moving back and forth through the school, have the same level of security that we've put in place for the rest of our elementary, middle, and high schools. So the cost associated with it, when you think of the three-year lease, it's a total cost of $274,000. We believe that the plumbing connection for all three modulators, all three school sites would be $88,500. Electricity, the technology, the fire alarms would be $125,000. We'd have to do soil testing and landscaping and get that approved, and that would be $80,000. So the total cost of the construction would be $735,000 for those three school sites. Then we would want to install security, which would be included door buzzer, cameras, so that we can watch the kids as they come and go, and potentially hire staff, depending upon where that modular unit went, so that somebody's escorting small groups of kids when they've got to go in for specials or back out for specials. That cost would be $97,500. And at some point, the regional office of education would want us to move those units out and come up with a different plan for how we would serve those students. And so we would, to decommission those, which would be dismantle and return the units, to get rid of the electric and the technology and the plumbing and then put the site work back so that it was converted back to a playground would be $79,500. So the grand total cost would be just roughly $1 million for those units for three years. Other suggestions from the community was adding additions to schools, and we were in the business of adding additions for quite some time. I'm going to say that this is an option we really never considered, because we don't have the finances to add additions to, to schools. It's, we don't have, as you know, Board of Education, we have not put invested money in the upkeep and the repair of our facilities like we need to, but we thought we would talk about if we did that, you know, how we would do that, just so that you know. We considered this option as it came from the community. At Brookdale, we would add two construction sites. It would add either four or six classrooms. We would add the full six classrooms, because once you start the construction, adding those extra bricks really isn't that much more. But to prepare the site, this would be a Type A. We had three different types of additions that we've added to our schools throughout the ages. This would be Type A, and it would cost between 2.4 and 2.6 million dollars. The other thing to consider is that this construction probably wouldn't occur until the summer of 19. We can't get the architectural, the design and the bids out on the street and get that construction started this year, would be the following year, so it would certainly delay any, any of the impact of reducing class sizes in addition. And now, the other thing also to consider is that when you start to add classrooms to schools, you've got to consider the other spaces within that facility. Library, a stage, a gymnasium, a cafeteria are designed for a building of a certain size, and when you start to grow beyond that, you need to start thinking about how you're going to get kids through the lunch line, through the, through the lunchroom, into the library, into the computer lab, so you've got to get creative with some of those other spaces as well. Or, or maybe you're just having some kids eat in their classroom, or, or, you know, putting library carts on, on a cart, books on a cart and delivering them to certain kids, because you can't get them into those other spaces. At Brooks would be Type B. Again, it would be six classrooms that we'd be looking for, be along the back. The cost of that would be 3.2 to 3.5 million dollars. And Peterson would be off the back end, be our Type C, so all three of these buildings would receive each one of the three different types of additions that we've put on throughout the school district, and the cost of that would be 2.8 to 3.1 million dollars. And then finally, I just want to emphasize, and I added this slide, and the board, you've seen this before, we had a facility assessment done four years ago by EMG, a group of folks who are not associated with construction or financing firms. They're completely associated with facility evaluations, and that's their only jobs. They weren't selling us anything. And what they told us is that for a district our size and for the age of our, our buildings and our building envelope, our roofs, our walls, our tuck pointing, our heating, our electricity, our infrastructure, we should be spending $8.4 million annually to keep our buildings in shape. That is very close to what our neighbors in 203 spend annually on their buildings, and they have half of the buildings that we do. And we are spending on average about $4 million on our facilities. So to go down to, and consider adding additions to a school is, in my opinion, something we shouldn't consider. We should be increasing the maintenance effort that we've got on our existing buildings. So it just doesn't make sense to add to schools when we've got schools that we are not maintaining at the level we should.
The process for this work, this work wasn't done in isolation. We met with the superintendent and talked about the guiding principles that we have used for the last few times that we've done attendance area adjustments. As we noted, we evaluated the options for modular classrooms or relocating grade levels, but those did not seem to be fiscally responsible, given that we have space in our underutilized buildings in the south. I have met with the principals multiple times to look at their current and future needs that they have, and then Jay and I developed potential scenarios using our student information system and Five Maps program, which we're going to look at a little bit later. Then we sat with the cabinet members and shared what those, the best scenarios, what those looked like, and with the superintendent, and talked about which ones that we felt like were the best options for us. And then I reviewed those proposals with the principals and talked about what those next steps would be if the board approved these attendance area adjustments.
Let me add that, you know, beyond the process that we put in place, all of you board members have shown a great deal of interest and have either emailed or phoned or came in and met with us personally to go through all of the options and all of the scenarios. So there was that even deeper layer to what was the thought process behind, behind this. So we appreciate that, so that, you know, that we did do our due diligence and did put some hours into this.
This diagram shows where our schools are located. The blue is our school district. It shows where our schools are located, and then the percentages, if you can see those, show what percent capacity we're utilizing. We wanted to share this with you because we wanted to show that even though we have a higher density of population in the north end of our district, we don't have as many schools in that end. So it makes sense then why those, that's where we see the overcrowding. In the south end, where we have fewer students, is where we have most of our schools, and those are being underutilized. You can also see that because of our growth and what is contained in our district, including Fox Valley Mall, our schools are not located, they're not evenly distributed. So I guess part of what I wanted to, to look at here is that even as we look at an ideal district map of what that would look like, when we start with where the schools are located, it's not an even distribution.
When we were in the growth years, we worked with both the city of Aurora and of Naperville and worked with their planning departments to determine where the new developments were coming in and worked with the developers on either land cash donations or land donations for our facilities. So we were always looking ahead for where we would need that next school. In those growth years, we were adding schools annually and sometimes putting additions on schools at the same time. So there was a lot of thought into that growth as we moved out. We also got very, very talented at transitioning kids through multiple schools as they went from, you know, one building to another to another as we opened them up. So it was a process that we got good at, and now we're kind of in the other back end of that where we've got declining enrollment. Unfortunately, it's not declining equally throughout the district. There has been some discussions about doing a grand boundary change and, you know, fixing everything at once. Well, there is no real fix to anything, and it's never going to be stable. It's always a work in progress, because there's always developments that are changing. We have a large nursery on the south end of our district that may get developed and would certainly impact us if we made a grand change today. There's discussions about Fox Valley Mall changing and potentially not being around in the same way, shape, or form that it is, and if that were to occur, would certainly impact us again. And believe it or not, Fermi Lab is in our attendance area. If something ever happened to Fermi Lab, we would be adding schools on the north end should that ever become a development. So we're always going to be doing some form of attendance area adjustments, even if we do a grand one. We did a large one when Matia opened, we did a large one probably seven or eight years ago, and we've done several adjustments since then, because nothing stays the same.
And just to piggyback onto that, while the last demographic study we did showed our overall enrollment slightly going down, we've still seen an increase in enrollment in the north part of the district. And to piggyback on what you said, north of 75th, just to give you an idea, north of 75th, we only have six elementary schools. South of 75th, we have 13. And most of the new growth is happening north of 75th where there's only six elementary schools. So that's just kind of further, just to kind of put it in perspective.
So this, these are the guiding principles that we use to look at and come up with the current proposal for the attendance area adjustments. Primary goal was to minimize the disruption to the least number of students. We looked at areas of new growth and tried to reassign those areas, particularly if they didn't have students there yet. It's easier to move students who are not yet attached to a school than it is to try to move students once they've become attached to a particular school. We also really wanted to make sure that we didn't make any changes to current middle and high school students, particularly high schools. Kids are very attached to their high schools, and if we were to do that, we would want to include much more community involvement than we were able to do at this time. The other piece that we have always done, but haven't always been explicit about, is that we are always very careful to balance the demographics of the students who are being reassigned. So we want to make sure that we are moving appropriate percentage of students who might be qualified for free and reduced lunch, or students with IEP or ELL, and we look and adjust staffing afterwards, but we want to make sure that we balance those demographics.
Laura, I just had a, that as far as the demographics, are we, when we talk about balancing the demographics of students, are there other things that, that go into that? Are we looking at homes versus, the percentage of homes versus percentage of multi-home dwellings? Or, I just wanted to...
We do, and when you look at free and reduced lunch and students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, those tend to be students in our rental areas versus students in single-family homes. That's not always true, but we look at both of those factors. So across all of the changes that we made, there are areas with single-family homes, there are areas with townhomes, and there are rental areas that we are in our proposal. Does that answer your question?
It does.
So before we switch over to Five Maps, I kind of wanted to explain the numbers that are on these particular charts, and then we'll go to the Five Maps and show you. So the capacity, so I listed the capacity of schools as well as how many sections were needed in the November 27th presentation. It also shows the RSP projected enrollment. So RSP, that's, those aren't actual students, that's their projected enrollment. So when you look at the proposed numbers, that's taking the students that are there and rolling them up a grade, and then est... and rolling them up a grade and then estimating how many kindergarteners will come into there. Both numbers are important to keep in mind. For example, simply rolling up the current enrollment would put Brookdale's enrollment for next year at six hundred and twenty-four, but RSP is projecting it at six thirty-eight. So that tells me that there's some growth that RSP is looking at, and in fact, there's been some growth there. So we want to keep both of those numbers in mind. It also is important to have the sections there because we adhere very closely to our class guidelines consistently across the district. So as I looked at these different sections, if there was a section that maybe was going to go up because it was close, it was on the bubble, then we accounted for the larger section rather than the lower section. So there's a lot of those features to keep in mind as we go through.
And if we were ever to go forward with lower class sizes, that would just increase the sections?
Absolutely.
With no room?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Five Maps is a software system that's an overlay on top of Google Earth. And what we're able to do is we're able to download our shape files for our Versatrans transportation system. So we are able to determine from where our kids reside in our transportation system, take those shape files, put them into Five Maps so that we can see where our schools are and our boundaries are in relationship to Google Earth. In addition to that, we can plot on their information that's related to our student information system so we can tell how many kids are in what parts of those neighborhoods and what are those kids', you know, grade levels and what do they do. So we use this and have used it now for about four years as a part of our boundary changes. In the past, we did it with grand Excel spreadsheets. Every subdivision had grid codes. So as a new subdivision came on, there was an eight-digit grid code. And I would take the eight-digit grid code, all of the new births in that area, all of the kindergartners, first graders, second graders, third graders, fourth graders, the school that they're at, and all thirty thousand kids, and we would do giant sorts to figure out how many kids were in each of those areas. So this is a much better product and something that we've used for a while. So I'm going to drive, and Laura's going to be the backseat driver.
Jay, real quick question. How long have we, how long have we used this particular system? And what have we seen, how have we seen it, we've used it, how comfortable or how has it come out as far as projections that we, that we've anticipated?
Well, it's an excellent product, and the data that's in it comes from us. So it's just a tool to be able to look at the data in a three-dimensional kind of pattern. So essentially, we're able to take our shape files, our boundaries for our schools, and put them in here, and we're able to put our students on top of that and find out where they're at so that when we want to decide that we're going to move, you know, these two streets, we know what the impact of those two streets will be on the school that's losing those kids and the student that is receiving those kids. And then it allows us to draw new boundaries so that if the board were to approve these boundaries, the new boundaries then can be exported, those shape files, back into Versatrans, and we're able to take the routing software and know that all of the kids within this purple area would receive this type of transportation. They'd be walkers, bus riders, et cetera.
If you haven't had a chance to see it yet, I would talk to Jay about, and take a look at it because it is pretty phenomenal what they can do with it. Because I know that, you showed me one time, a couple of years ago even, and it was, I was amazed at what you could do with all of that.
It doesn't, however, project. It doesn't give projections.
Okay.
So there's, that's what you're asking. So there's no, so the accuracy is based on the information that we put in.
Okay.
So we have to use this in conjunction with the demographic study that tells us this particular area, Brookdale, is going to have this much growth.
Okay.
And then look at that and compare that to what our current enrollment is and moving and how those students would roll up to the next grade level.
Okay. And Jay, is this what you, when you, when you showed me the physical maps that you were showing me, is this what was used?
Probably.
Okay.
It's the go-to thing I use now for this, for double-checking the generation or the impact of new developments and the land cash development tables with the cities. You know, they'll say that, you know, the formula is that you'll receive X amount of elementary, middle, and high school. And I can go back, you know, three years later as it's built out and say, well, we were on, you know, the generation tables worked or it was off. We're getting more kids in this development for some reason.
And that's kind of what I was asking about that. Okay.
And then I take that to the city and say, you guys should be giving us more money.
So this purple area is Brookdale, and, no, go ahead and zoom in. So you can see that one little cutout there, up there is Pebblewood Estates, and it's cut out because that is one of the areas we're recommending move to Longwood, and you can see where Longwood is right there. And then further down on fifty-nine is Courtyard Villages, kind of that loop there, yep, right there. That's Courtyard Village, and those, that is another area that we've recommended for reassignment. And then those two other cutout areas of the purple area are Bridgewater and Riverbrook West that we've recommended. We looked at some other areas to move, if you'll go back up north of Longwood. No, not that far north. Go by the cutout area. This is why he calls me a backseat driver. So when you look there along the left side of that upper purple area, that is Country Lakes Estates, and those students at one time did go to Longwood. And the area sort of beside the cutout area of Pebblewood is Autumn Run, and those students also at one time went to Longwood. Longwood was not able to absorb all of those students, so we didn't make that recommendation, partly because Longwood wasn't able to absorb them, but also because students to the west of fifty-nine attend Granger Middle School and to the east of fifty-nine, for the most part, attend Hill Middle School. So to move those students at Country Lakes, at Country Lakes or Autumn Run would mean that we are moving current middle school students, which was part of the guiding principle that we didn't want to do. In addition, the Country Lakes students were moved, they were part of the changes in '08 and '09, and Autumn Run was part of the changes in thirteen fourteen. And as we talked about, Courtyard Villages farther south on fifty-nine, one of the areas we are recommending move, and Pebblewood, both were also part of the changes in thirteen fourteen. So we're trying to minimize, trying to move the fewest number of subdivisions twice as possible, but we did have to move some of them. Have questions about Brookdale?
The only thing that I know, that when I came to meet with you and spend considerable time, you were able to isolate different areas and determine how many students and also determine what middle school they were going to. So it wasn't like willy-nilly. It was really pretty much, you know, scientific. I mean, you could isolate different areas in different neighborhoods in order to tell me why and why not different neighborhoods were suggested and why not.
Absolutely. And some of those I shared, but the part that you're referring to is overlaying students on there, and we didn't overlay student information because of confidentiality reasons in a public meeting like that. But we absolutely did look at different areas to see how many students are in that particular area and how many, you know, if it would change their middle school, like as we considered, you know, Country Lakes, next to it is Atwater, which is one of our new developments, and those students go down Eola to Steck Elementary School. So we looked at, could we send them with those, that student, but it would be moving them again, it would be changing their middle school, and it would be sending them farther away, and it would not be balancing their demographics. So we kind of used those guiding principles with each, with each area that we looked at. I think also the Group One Brookdale has proposed just not sending the Riverbrook West and the Bridgewater students, keeping that group intact, and just sending the Pebblewood students and the students from Courtyard Villages. That would not provide enough relief at Brookdale in the upcoming years. We would still be using the art and music rooms for classrooms and that kind of thing. So it didn't provide enough, enough support. Tried to mute, move, again, the number one principle was to move the least number of students possible to get where we need to be.
To your point, Mr. Razak, we are, when we're able to load the student data on there, we can drill down to a street, to a couple of houses, highlight those houses, and we can tell you how many boys, how many girls, how many ELL, how many special education, how many of what ethnicity, and then determine, you know, how would that impact schools?
I, when you, you showed that to me, and I guess because I had a lot of questions, but that was extremely helpful, especially when looking at all the guiding principles on the demographic side and ensuring and having a chance to view that specificity that you just mentioned. That was extremely helpful to see that you really were looking down to the most minute level possible. So that was extremely helpful for me.
So then let's take a look at Brooks. So the orange, both the different color shaded orange, is the Brooks attendance area, the new proposed one, attendance area. Previously, yeah, we were proposing to move these two areas up in the northern part, up off of Butterfield Road, Cambridge Countryside and Country Oaks, Butterfield Townhomes. Those students were moved from Young to Brooks in thirteen fourteen. So I really thought long and hard before we kind of did that, but it does help us sort of unify some of that neighborhood up there and moves another, a large enough group of students. The other area that we considered, can you go over by Longwood? This area that's blue over here is Bristol Station, and that's just two apartment buildings. That at one point did go to Longwood, but again, now there are seventy-some students in that particular area. And so to move them further down Eola would be an option, but it might change their middle school. I would also be concerned that our two schools down Eola, which is Steck and Young, are still, if you remember from the attendance area adjustments a few years ago, those group areas are taking on growth from the new developments around the train station and from Atwater. And neither of those, none of those developments are completed. So we don't really know exactly where Steck and Young are going to end up, and we want to make sure that we have space for those adjustments that we've already made a few years ago. So that's why we then eliminated this option from Bristol Station. Go over closer to Brooks. And go down or up. That one tri, or square that on the other side of Eola that sort of looks like an area that could be moved is actually Jewel Osco, so there aren't any kids in there.
No.
So, yeah, everybody's eye goes right to that one. And so that was, the one just south of it where Jay has the little hand is one of the areas, Ashton Point, that we moved the last time in thirteen fourteen. Or, not thirteen fourteen, but that we moved the last time, that we did it. Yeah. Okay. Questions about Brooks?
Yeah, you know, I mentioned this last time. I do have a concern for the Cambridge Countryside just because they had to go through that four years ago. And I knew a lot of parents at that time that were moved from Young to Brooks, and now that same area is being moved from Brooks to Young. And it's never easy, but I will say the parents that I've talked to, that I know, the adjustment was, went extremely well for the kids. They ingrained into the new school wonderfully. And the benefit, if there is any benefit out of it, is that when they got to middle school, they knew all that many more kids, because now they knew kids from two elementary schools that went into one middle school. You know, so I feel bad, but again, I know when I came and met with you guys for two and a half hours and when Mike was there, and we literally went into every area, the Brooks area, the Brookdale area, the Peterson area, and got to the point where we were moving individual streets, you know, there, there wasn't a lot of other options. And, and, you know, you guys did look at every area. So while I feel for areas especially like this who are getting moved again, you know, we have to look at what's best for all kids and for all elementary schools, so.
Peterson? So this is the Peterson area, and there is a section, can you put Oh Peterson? So when you look at that pink section over there that's just under the words that say Niqua Valley, that was an area, that's Crestview Knowles and Wheatland Heights and Wheatland Highlands. So this was an area that, you know, seemed not contiguous to the rest of it and an area that we considered perhaps that we should move. However, if we moved them, they would go to Kendall Elementary School, and Kendall only feeds to Crone. Currently, these students attend Skullin Middle School. So again, that would be changing students' middle schools, and there's a number of middle schoolers in that area, so that would be changing students' middle schools, which we tried not to do.
How many students are in that?
Yeah.
Pardon?
What is this again?
This is Crestview Knowles. So it's an area that's, it's not, it's not an area. It's an area that we thought about.
Okay.
But it's a large amount of elementary students.
But it's a large area, and it's, and it's not contiguous to the rest of Peterson.
And so if you were to move them or move their middle school, Skullin wouldn't be able to absorb that many either, would they?
Well, they already go to Skullin.
Okay, and Crone?
So if we, if we moved them, then we'd be changing their middle schools, and we really tried not to change these kids.
To Crone?
Yes.
And Crone would not be able to absorb...
It probably would be able to absorb them, but we tried not to change students' middle schools.
Okay, because I know earlier you said the middle schools, you know, didn't have the capacity either, so.
The, middle schools don't have capacity for the, all of the fifth graders. If we were to take all of fifth grade and move all of Peterson's fifth grade and move it to Crone, they don't have room for that.
But I think the top guiding principle you followed in this particular case, which was number two on the guiding principles, is move the least amount of students possible, even at the elementary level.
Right.
I mean, this would move them at elementary and middle school.
Right.
So, you know, this would move a significant, I think it was like a couple hundred elementary, was it, was it that large? Okay.
No, not that many.
I remember it was a significant amount of elementary school kids.
But it wasn't, yeah, it was a number of students. And so then when you see, now that you see the two overlaid, you can see the areas that we did move. So starting at the north is Emerson Park, and that is one of the new developments. There's currently, I think only two students in Emerson Park, maybe three students in Emerson Park, and the rest of it is being, is being developed. So that was a time when we reassigned new growth to go to a different school because they're not here yet, and so they won't have to break an attachment. Then going farther south, you see this large cutout area of the pink, and you can see kind of underneath where Peterson is. This is a large area that of Ashwood Park that is not yet developed. And so again, reassigning areas of new growth before students actually arrive. Over to the right, east, thank you, over to the east is Ashwood Heights.
I'll get you to Disneyland.
Thank you. And there are some stu, this area is under partial construction, and so there are some students in this particular area. students in this particular area, and they are very close to Peterson, but it's not, the, the construction is not completed yet. So again, we are moving those particular students. And then when you look to the south, you can see these two developments, Enclave, which is the row of townhouses, yep, down there, that are under construction. And then to the north of that, the Ponds, and both of those areas do not have students yet, so we would move, we proposed moving those students to the Kendall area. And then can you go over by Anderman Acres, up north off of 104th? And so then when you look at this particular area where he has the hand right now, that is Anderman Acres, and that would be changing elementary students, moving them from Peterson to Frye. There are about 25 students in there, but Frye feeds into Skullin, and that's where these students already attend the, the middle school, so it doesn't change their middle school. And then over to, yep, to the left, this area is Hidden Creek, and again, a new development that doesn't have any students in it yet. And so we would propose to move that area to Frye, and then Skullin, and then Wabanci. Skullin does feed into both Wabanci and Niqua, so in this particular region gave us a lot of, more options than we had in, in the northern regions.
Can I ask you a question real quick? The A area, Nanny Berry Road, I know, I remember that road, Ashwood Heights, I know there's about 12 or 15 houses there now. I mean, are the projections that are coming out of there pretty big? I mean, I'm looking at that, and I'm like, they are literally less than a quarter mile walking to Peterson, you know? And it's kind of one of those areas where, okay, they're on the right side of 248th, they're so close to Peterson. You know, I, I, I'm just wondering if the numbers are so big projected there that we really need to move that out if we're really that concerned? Like, because I can understand D and E, right? Because they're across 248th, they're close to already other kids that go to Frye, you know? While, yes, while they are close to Peterson, it's, you know, Frye's just a stone's throw away too, you know? But I'm looking at A, and I'm thinking, huh, you know, now are we gonna have to bus those kids in A? I mean, probably, huh? Because they're probably more.
Right, well, and to go back to your question about projections, so the projection from the generation table tells us that we're gonna have 11 students, and we already have 14 before it's completed. So the projections from the generation table, I can't actually use. So no, it's not a large area, but, but it is an area under partial construction.
All the areas that we're talking about, they're all going to be bused, they will all be bused over to, to Frye or to Kendall, correct?
Yes.
And I look at A, and while they're not crossing 248th, they're still having to cross 103, so I really wonder, obviously, you, the proximity, you say, yes, you can walk, but I don't know if there's, if they, they actually, I don't know if there's sidewalks even along that route where they can actually.
Well, I can tell you that currently, because this area is under construction, a number of kids are bused already to Peterson.
Okay.
Because there's no sidewalks. There's, those are hazards.
Yeah.
Now, when that community's finished, and those sidewalks are in, and they're not walking past, you know, cement trucks and all of that, those kids will become walkers. I don't know if 103rd would be considered a hazard or not, we'd have to do a study.
None of that side, it's pretty light.
Probably not.
And plus, there's that roundabout there, right, that, yeah?
Any other questions? Then we'll move back from Five Maps. So the transportation costs, that, as you noted, there are some areas that we will need to bus. It would be in addition of approximately three additional routes with a cost of $300,000. I think the thing to remember is that our transportation costs ebb and flow, given our enrollment. So it would be three additional routes, to the best of our knowledge, but that doesn't mean that there won't be another area where we can save on, on route. So that's very much an estimated cost.
As you're aware, we have a tiered routing system, so our first route's $120. If we can tier that bus so that it picks up another school, a middle, a middle school students, then that route drops significantly, and it's $15. And if we get a third, it's even less. So it, that $300,000 is a projection. We have incredible router, and Alicia Banks, and, and I, you know, I gotta tell you, she did a marvelous job, and she and Ron worked to find efficiencies. So whether we're doing this or not, that's just a, a number now, if everything stayed the same. Depending on where kids are and how full routes are, it, it might not be $300,000, but it might be $400,000.
One question that I had that I didn't see, I'm not sure if there's someplace or is, what does this, what does this proposal mean for us from a staffing standpoint, from staffing cost standpoint and staffing standpoint? Have we been able to assess that as of yet?
So we would, if the board approved the attendance area adjustments, then we would look at those staffing issues, and we would shift teachers. So it wouldn't mean that we're cutting teachers, but it could possibly mean that we're shifting teachers, particularly in areas like special ed and ELL. If we're moving students from one school to another, then we shift them. So when we've done the attendance area adjustments before, that's what we've done. So the next steps would be to seek board approval at tonight's meeting. We would notify families that are impacted by attendance area adjustments, and as we've done in the past, students who are completing their fifth grade year, entering fifth grade would be allowed attendance exemptions and allowed to remain at their current school if parents were able to provide transportation. As Mr. Rising noted, we have gotten very good at welcoming new families into new schools, and so we would have open houses. It helps kids and parents to see the new school. It helps them to see that there's not, you know, tables in the hallway and little teaching areas, and that, that there's actually space in the room. And I always laugh when kids come into our buildings because they all look the same, and the kids are like, oh, this looks just like my school. So we would have open houses. We would look at that staffing impact with principals and actually do the numbers on whether we needed to shift staff or not. And we would also ensure that current staff communicate with the new staff at the new school to make sure that we're meeting students' needs, whether that be through IEPs or 504, just students who have particular needs. Very similar to what we do when we move students from fifth grade to sixth grade, and share information about kids and how kids best learn. Do you have questions over there?
Mr. Carubis, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, what are you doing over there?
No, you guys are doing a great job.
Are you doing okay over there?
Is he crawling over?
I am slightly medicated, but I'm fine.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I will recess the special workshop. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I see you moved.